Oh, good. Good.
I hope he's not.
No, it's.
I survived you. I survived you too.
Sun's good. Something you can't catch.
He still has fever.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Lake Clark Shores Town Council Meeting of October 10th, 2023. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Vice Mayor Robert Chau Who.
Yeah.
President Pro Tem Valentin Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember John Maples.
Here. Good. With all Stan, we're going to have a moment of silence in the invocation by Pastor Stan. The good news is, is we don't have anybody in town or any of those residents that we need to have a moment of silence. But what I would like to observe is a moment of silence for all the victims of senseless war. It's unbelievable to me. So this is for any victim of war. Pastor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A reading from the Word of God. Listening and Doing. My dear brothers and sisters, take note of this. Everyone should be quick to listen. Slow to speak. And slow to become angry. Because human anger does not produce the righteousness that God desires. Therefore, get rid of all anger, moral filth, that is so prevalent, and humbly accept the word that is planted within you. Listening and doing. Heavenly Father, we come before you humble. We ask that you might reign in this place and reign in our hearts. Our desire is that we would serve you and serve you well. And Father, many of us come here this very evening because we love this town. And Father, we would pray that you would unite us in a way that brings you honor and glory. We will not forget those that are around the world that are in such struggling conflict that there is death in their midst. May you shine your grace and mercy and peace upon them as you will this evening. We come before you in the name of your son, by precious and only name. Amen.
Mr. Mayor.
Pastor. Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Stan.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. We're going to do things a little bit differently than we've been doing in the past. We are going to move the audience comments to the beginning of the council meeting. We still will entertain questions that may arise through the meeting regarding any new business, unfinished business, things of that nature. I think we're going to try this because we don't always have the opportunity to answer your questions, each one of us, as we're listening to you and taking in your comments. This is not a debate time. This is a comment. We are interested in your comments, and we do care what you have to say. So this will be the first time we're going to try it. We're going to see how it goes, and we're going to move on from there. Okay, so in the future, if you want to, when you come in, the agenda is online. We have agendas out in the lobby. You can read it over. You can put your questions down here. I will call you in order. When you come to the podium, please speak into the microphone clearly. Give your name and your address and what your topic wants to be. Okay? All right. Very good. So the first one we're going to call is Vernon Leto. Yes, sir. Come right up to the podium.
My name is Vernon Leto, 2347 Palm Road, West Palm Beach, Florida, 33406.
Hey, you want to speak about annexation this evening?
I really don't want to be annexed into any other location other than what I'm living in at the present time. What you mo- I question is, what are you going to give us?
Okay.
They're taking from of us the taxes that we're going to have to pay to Lake Clark Shores to be have the ability, liability of having to pay these taxes to the, which we do did not have to do where we do live at the present time.
Okay, that's a valid question. We will address that question under New Business with the town manager. So we'll, we'll address that. Have a seat there, and we'll go over that. Carolyn Bell. I'm guessing everybody here is here for the annexation. But come up, give us your name, introduce yourself to us. We're not bad people here. And we want to hear what you say. So go ahead.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Bell, 2254 Edgewater Drive, West Palm, 33406. We also really, my husband's getting ready to retire. We really don't want to pay a penny more in taxes under any circumstances. And part of the reason we picked our house was that it was county of West Palm Beach. You know, I know everybody here is really great and everything, but that's just, you know.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, next, Gail Arbor. Yeah, come right up.
My name is Gail Arbor. I live at 2278 Edgewater Drive in West Palm Beach, and I really love where I live. I do not want to be annexed into Lake Clark Shores, although it is a wonderful town. I've been, I've known people that live in Lake Clark Shores my entire life, went to school with them, good friends, good people, good neighborhood. It's always very nice. But I don't want to be paying, I also am retired, don't want to pay extra taxes for what I already have. I don't see any benefit to me and my husband. So therefore, I do not want to be annexed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gail. Okay, Michael DeLong.
Good evening, Michael DeLong, 2395 Edgewater Drive, West Palm Beach. I'm a retired deputy sheriff and military veteran, and, and I'm going to go through this one, one at a time. It's the notice that you guys sent out says that the Board of County Commissioners will provide the date and time when considering a final adoption. I think it's kind of inappropriate. If they're going to consider and adopt, why aren't they here? Why aren't they speaking?
Well, they will have their own separate meeting, and you will also want to attend that meeting and make your comments heard.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yes.
It appears to me that the only rational benefit the town of Lake Clark Shores would get is our tax money would double. I read Statute 171.042, and in, in the paragraphs, it says, "The municipality, Lake Clark Shores, shall prepare a feasibility study." Have you all done that?
We will cover that under the New Business section, sir.
Okay. Moving right along, 171.0413, in the body of paragraph two, it says, "The ordinance shall be submitted to the vote of the registered electors of the area proposed." I'm not, I'm just a paralegal, and I'm not a lawyer, but that sounds like it's a violation of the homestead law in the state of Florida. I could be wrong, but it sounds like it is, that somebody else could.
We can have, we can have the attorney address that for you also, under the New Business.
Yeah, sir. I don't think, I don't think it's right for somebody else to decide what my homestead's gonna, what's gonna happen to, what's not gonna happen.
Right.
Lastly, we get fire rescue, and it's Palm Beach County, and I've used them several times. We get the Sheriff Department, Palm Beach County, I've used them several times. As a matter of fact, I'm retired from that. I know that 42 years in law enforcement, Lake Clark Shores PD doesn't have SWAT, they don't have a helicopter, they don't have an emergency field force, they don't have a marine unit, or the other things that go along with, with, with which Metro Palm Beach County has the Sheriff Department, because they've absorbed, the sheriffs, sheriffs absorbed four or five cities, to my knowledge.
We do have a marine unit.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you guys have a SWAT full-time?
Not a full-time SWAT, but we have, we have it in a local agreement with Sheriff's Department and Palm Springs also.
Well, I understand that, but when I was a deputy on road patrol, if the mayor asked us to come into the cities, or one of his designees, we would do that. But when we came into the city, we had all these equipment and personnel that the average police departments don't have. So why should I pay for Lake Clark Shores PD and, and the other things when we already have them with the Sheriff Department and the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue? So, and I know that the water and sewer are Palm Springs. So I'm going to have to say no to this proposal. I don't think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Okay, next, Mike Banham.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thanks for having us.
Good evening.
The opportunity. I think you can see by most everybody here, most of the homeowners, the, I think approximately 93 that are affected by this, you'll probably clearly here are not interested in being annexed. I and my family have been in the Lake Clark Shores area. We built in the estate of Lake Clark Shores. We've been on Palm Road, excuse me, 2398 Palm Road for over 20 years. So many of the residents here, 20, 30, 40 years have been here. We've all lived very comfortably under the county rule. And like a lot of people here, we moved into the area to save a little bit of money because it was unincorporated. I think also everybody fully understands the implication that Lake Clark Shores is looking to expand their tax base so that they can better accomplish the goals that you all have for yourselves and for the sitting community, and that's fine. The letter that went out states that we meet the criteria as an enclave. And I see as you're showing on the map up there, the green section there. If I understand correctly, an enclave reflects that we have to utilize the city through the city entrances, meaning we have to go through Lake Clark Shores to obtain Palm Road and some of the other Edgewater. And that would make us therefore eligible as an enclave. And I believe if an enclave allows for other access, which we have from Florida Mango, we don't have to go through Lake Clark Shores. And honestly, most of us don't go through Lake Clark Shores.
That's, that's not what it is. The enclave is where we have the borders that are contiguous. So that's.
Well, an interesting point, because the, the letter says, "We meet their criteria."
Yes.
Goes on as an enclave. And it just seems, as, as Mike and others have said, we've all been very happy with the county services that have been here. We don't see any true benefit that us becoming Lake Clark Shores as a mailing address and part of the city is truly going to offer us any benefit that is going to justify the, nobody's been told honestly what our cost is going to be, but I think everybody knows it's going to be substantial.
Okay.
And everybody else, our taxes and our homeowner's insurance has just been going up and up and up.
I feel your pain, sir. We're going to cover all that under New Business, so stick around, and we hope to answer some of your concerns.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Arnie, is this Brandon?
Right. That's my handwriting.
Oh, okay. All right. Arnie, come right up. How are you? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Darrell Raymond. I've lived at 2310 Edgewater Terrace for the past 19 years. I also do not want to be part of this annexation. I don't see the benefit to it. I've read the feasibility study. What I read in the feasibility study was, you're going to take the tax revenue generated by the 93 residents to improve septic, get people off septic in Lake Clark Shores, provide extra police coverage, code enforcement. This is the information I got off the feasibility study, or somewhere that was online.
I don't think you guys are going to be affected by any septic to sewer conversion.
Well, you already have. That's my point.
You already have sewer.
Water, city sewer. We have sidewalks, we have streetlights. So to be incorporated to Lake Clark Shores that does not have street, or city sidewalk, city sewer, the benefits was, we're all kind of wondering, what does that do for us? I went, I looked at the tax base and the, the millage rate that Lake Clark Shores has. And then I knocked it down to 0.05. And I took homeowners, like my, my neighbor Heidi, who's been here 27 years, retired, fixed income, her taxes will go up $400 maybe. But then I have these people that have been in the community for, what, two years? They're going to see maybe a $16 or $800 tax increase. The highest one, my next door neighbor who bought last year, pays $7100. His taxes are going to jump up to about $2200. He's not here tonight. He's a funeral. He's probably burying something, which is what we feel like is going to happen. In addition to that, my homeowner's insurance, like probably everybody in this room, has gotten notices. Mine went from 4,800 to 8,200.
I, I feel your pain.
So.
Because you're correct, we all have had the same fact.
I mean, I'm still working. I make a decent living. It doesn't affect me. My taxes are going to go up about 600, because I lived here 19 years. But the newbies and the retirees and the fixed income people, they're going to get slaughtered. They're standing here. But the bottom line is, we want our voices heard. We want to have the right to vote. Have you guys see what we want by vote. You all are assuming this position because you were voted in. The people had a chance to say, I want Mr. Freebold as our mayor. I want.
Well, no, sir, they did. These guys up here wanted me as mayor.
Yeah.
We have a strong manager, weak mayor form of government.
Bottom line is, is the.
Okay, so I would, I will make this suggest, I will make this suggestion to you, sir. I, I heard that. I will make this suggestion. There will be a Board of County Commissioners meeting, and I highly recommend that if these are your feelings, that you attend that meeting also. They'll give you plenty of opportunity, probably less than I will, to speak. However, I would recommend that.
Yeah.
And we're going to cover all of your concerns that you just went over. You know, we don't make these decisions willy-nilly.
Well, that's good to hear.
Look into these things. This has been in the works for years.
20 years back.
Well, no, not 20 years. It was.
It's been a long time.
No, because we had to have the definition changed in Tallahassee, and that just, that all has just occurred, because there are certain legal issues that go with it. So.
I've already reached out to our county commissioner, Mike Barnett. I've come back from him this morning.
Yep.
So we're doing the, we're doing the legwork. Bottom line is, we just want our voices heard. We want to have it put up for a vote, so these 95 residents can say, we don't want.
Okay.
Because I'm sure it'll be a unanimous decision.
I understand.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. And we will let you know the date of the meeting during the manager's discussion under New Business for that. Okay, now, that's all the cards I have. Is there anybody else that would like to comment on the agenda? Yes, ma'am. Just come right up and just give your name and address.
I'm Sally Passanio, 2275 Edgewater Drive, West Palm Beach, Florida. This bill 471 that you had passed, I'm reading the economic impact statement here, and they are asked for advantages. And I see here it says, "Septic tank conversion will benefit quality of life issues." It won't benefit us because we don't have septic tanks. So I think that you were very underhanded when you submitted this. You didn't give them the full information. And I just think you're.
So let me just clarify, because I know you folks haven't been here for any of the previous meetings. Any of the conversion discussion only affects 702 homes, and they're all in Lake Clark Shores.
I know.
You will not, or would not be assessed or anything. So that's the only amount of numbers.
This is a lie.
I understand.
By admission, by, yeah, it's a lie. I mean, if they went by this and passed the law because they saw this, I think that's very underhand.
Okay. Okay. Is there anybody else? No, no, sir. Now, wait a minute. We're not going to take outbursts from the audience. If you would like to speak, please step up to the podium. As I said, sir, I'm not even going to entertain it. Sir, come to the podium. Hold on, I got him coming up right back here. He was coming up. You'll be next. Come right up, sir. Thank you. We appreciate that. We, please. Okay.
My name is David McCambe. I live at 2425 Palm Road.
Good evening, David.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And as I always do, when I, when I have the opportunity to address an individual or a group of elected officials, I do want to thank you for your service of going through all the trouble of being elected to something and having to deal with everything that you have to deal with as an elected official. I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Even though you're not in my, you know, it's not my municipality at this point, but it probably will be at some point. Just for the record, I'm opposed to annexation, but I do have a question. And you might not be able to address it, but maybe later it'll be addressed. I just put it out there. In the tax, I realized it's a 6.1 mil increase in taxes. I saw that the letter that was out here, and I looked it up. I do have a question, though, on our, in our current taxes, the county assesses us, and I guess it's a flat assessment of $545 for garbage and suit and.
I'm going to go over that.
Trash pickup. Yeah. Is that going to go away?
I'm going to go over that.
Okay, you're going to cover that. Okay, because that would be my question. It does lower, obviously, the millage if it.
It'll be, it'll be better, too.
It's, I'm going to go over that.
Yeah. And I do see you do, you do cover that in your, in the millage. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Sir, oh, hold on. He's next. Sir, right here. Oh, okay. Come right up. Yes. No, it's fine. Oh, did I didn't call you out? I'm sorry. I put that in there. My apologies. My apologies.
I think I need to speak and then leave and leave you to all to.
Okay.
Perform your civic duties. I am here to oppose the annexation. I oppose the increase in taxes. I believe in 1776, we fought a war in which we were entitled to be represented before we got taxes instead of after the taxes were imposed. And I, I think it's wrong to tax us. However, I understand what you've done, and I've read the, I've read the laws you're following. I also object to the regulations that we're going to come under. I have lived, my wife and I have lived here now for 45 years. We have had several burglaries. The sheriff has always responded very well for us. They even caught one of the burglars and convicted him.
Good.
And I've, and we've had, I've got a police car, two, two houses down from me that's there very often, another police car often right across the street from me, and I believe there's a sheriff's car right down Edgewater from. I'm at 2432 Edgewater Drive. And I know you all are fine people. I even know Mr. Chau Who personally from occasional appearances in court together. And, and I know.
Oh, boy, that's a, that's a compliment.
I, it's, it's, I know, I know he's an honorable person, and he's not prone to power plays, but I have always been a little bit nervous about municipalities, you know. Perhaps it's because I grew up in Chicago with Mayor Daley and his war system of politics. Perhaps it's because I was at one point Jim Adams' partner and was an assistant city attorney in some of the local cities. Like, I used to see knockdown, dragout fights among council people in Lantana. I have been involved in litigation in Lake Worth and even in Juneau Beach, and I've been involved in code enforcement proceedings in Lake Worth. And I would rather try to avoid those. You know, even though this is an honorable board, things change. Every so often, there is a retirement or an election, and you get new people. And I would just rather we not have to do that. Now, I would just urge you to please let this somehow go to a vote if possible. And I, with that, I'm going to go home and make sure my wife hasn't fallen down.
I apologize for overlooking your card, Mr. Musgrove.
That's quite all right.
Have a good evening.
Have a good evening.
Be good.
Take care.
Okay, sir. Oh, that's okay.
Well, I'm a little head up about this, and I don't think anybody here wants to pay the extra taxes.
Sorry.
My name is John Eads. I live at 2275 Edgewater Drive.
What's your last name?
E A D E S. I just want to, who's, who on this committee or in your town, you got with Rick Roth to do this feasibility study, listing? And it's not just one, it's all three reasons. It's about the septic tank system. Nobody has septic tanks. I mean, so that's why I'm saying the House bill that gave this enclave the special dispensation of being, you know, within your border, is predicated on, it's falsehoods, lies, preoccupation. It's like, I just want to thank you guys for the real civic lesson here about how it's really done. You just come in here, railroad over us, take our usurped dominion over our property. And I don't like it. And I just want to express that to you here, and I hope you consider that in your decision.
Thank you. Is there anybody else with any comments? Yes, come right up.
Good evening. My name is Julia Hirsch. I live at 2476 South Florida Mango. And like the gentleman previously mentioned, we are the newcomers to the neighborhood. We've only had our house for about two and a half years. And we are very happy with everything that we have so far, except for the speeding on Florida Mango. So unless this is going to solve this and the pets that consistently get hit by cars on the road and the car accidents and, you know, stop the road widening, then we're pretty much against this. But I had a question about the Section 171046. In it, it says, "Enclaves can create significant problems in planning, growth management, and service delivery," and therefore declares that as a policy of the state to eliminate enclaves. Are you going to address those problems in planning, growth management, and service delivery today?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Do we have any residents from Lake Clark Shores that would like to say anything about the agenda? I'm sorry, come right back up. Yep.
Do you all make the ultimate final decision, or does that come from the county that makes the final decision?
We have to have the, we have to have the blessing from the county. They'll bless it.
If the county says no, it's done.
That's correct.
Yes, sir. Okay, anybody else? No? Nobody at this time? Oh, come on up, sir.
Gerard Sanchez, 8360 West Lake Drive. I was a resident of Broward County for 24 years prior to moving here to Lake Clark Shore. So I'm just curious, this is interesting, this, this topic, because Broward County had the same similar issue. Is, is there a bigger plan with the county? Because it sounds, in Broward County, they wanted to get rid of all the unincorporated areas and put them with the city, and basically let them decide who they want. Is that the same thing that's going on in Palm Beach County government? Is, is that's what's, because maybe these folks, maybe we should be talking in that, if that's the case. I'm just curious.
We'll, we'll cover all of that. Okay, Ashok, did you want to come up? You go, okay. Anybody else before we move on? No? Okay, very good. Do we have any questions emailed, written?
No, no questions on.
Okay, so. All accept a motion for the approval of the agenda? Second? Anyone?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion for consent?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Chairs? Okay. We have no presentations. We have no quasi judicial proceedings, and we will move on to the meat and potatoes, the public hearing for the annexation of Edgewater Park. Mr. Lubello?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me give you a little background, and then I'll obviously go over the benefits and the costs of annexation. So you'll have everything laid out. And I obviously have a memo that explains a lot of this in the back, if you'd like to take a copy. Little bit about the background. In last year, the state legislature passed a local bill declaring Edgewater Park an enclave. So which means that there's no vote required, there's no letter required that was sent out. I sent that out. I sent that letter out just because I thought that was the right thing to do. But the 32 acres and the 98 parcels was considered and was approved to be an enclave. But the thirty-two acres and the ninety-eight parcels was considered and was approved to be an enclave. So what that means, it only has to be approved by this council, and then it's approved by the, the, the state, I mean, the county board of commissioners. And you guys are annexed as of that date. So that's the background. Let me tell you a little bit about the benefits and, of course, the costs, because that was all over the place. I, I think about police, that's, that's the biggest thing here. And we do have mutual aids with the sheriff. You'll still pay your sheriff, your county taxes. You will still have the, all kind of the, the, the units that the, the officer, thank you for your service, by the way, that explain, we still have an excellent relationship with the sheriff's department. They will still do all those services. You'll still pay county taxes. So on police, what's the big thing about police is response time. Obviously, you, that saves lives. That matrix is used on public service. It's used on ambulance services, public safety, fire. We're right here. So that saves lives. That right there is worth some money. We'll have community policing. Everybody that I know that I ask around town, who's that resident? I asked the lieutenant right there. I said, Lieutenant, who's, who lives on this? She knows every resident in this town. So that's what community policing is, knowing your residents. It actually solves crimes. It actually helps with burglary, burglaries and stuff like that. We will have vacation checks. These are also services that we provide. If you go out on a cruise or something out of town, we can check your house. We're going to patrol the neighborhood. Right now, the sheriff is so big, they do an excellent job, but they can't really patrol all the neighborhoods that they're in charge of. So we're going to patrol your neighborhood. That's a great benefit. So right there, I could stop. I think that's a major benefit, but let me keep going with the benefits are. We're going to have a building department that's right here. You don't have to go to the county. Customer service. So we're here to help you on any of your permitting needs. Your infrastructure, we'll be in charge of all your infrastructures. That's roads, sidewalks, drainage. The first, after this is annexed, if it's annexed, we'll go out there, we'll survey to see if there's any safety needs that we take care of immediately. If not, we'll plan any, any deferred maintenance. We'll, we'll come up with a plan to see if we need to repair anything in the long run, how your conditions of your roads are. So right after annexation, we will go out there and survey all the infrastructure. You know, you know about, about our events. We have a great barbecue. We have holidays coming up. We have a monster truck event coming up at the end of the month. We have the, the best parks anywhere that I could talk about. We have tennis that's being just repaved and recoded this month, and we have pickleball coming down next month. You have a local voice. You don't have to go see the county commission. You, you'll shape the community right here with how you want to see this community being shaped in the future. You have a voice to shape policy and meet with the local elected officials. Code compliance, safety is paramount. Obviously, if we see anything against the code, that's a safety issue. We're going to be on that. We don't want to have any issues with safety, but also there's aesthetics and maintenance. It keeps up your value if everything is, looks good. So that's, we don't want to find people. We just want to make sure everybody's in compliance with our codes. You have a manager, myself, who's an advocate. A lot of you called me, and I appreciate that. I sent that letter out. You, you saw I answered the phone. I answered your questions. I met with a few of you. So I'm there for you. Any quality of lights, quality of life issues, anything that you need from me, I'm here for you. I have an open door policy. Intangibles. I can't tell you how many times people have said, I listed my property, but I want to use this address, but I live in unincorporated Palm Beach County. You can't do that. Obviously, you can't lie on your, your, your listing when you list your properties. Those are some of the intangibles, having a prestigious address, as I think you would when you have the town of Lake Clark Shores as your address. So let me, let me go over the savings, okay, and then I'll go over the costs. The savings are, it's exactly like that gentleman said, you're, there's, we, the town pays for your solid waste collection and recycling. We pay for all the residential solid waste. That's, that's roughly three hundred and fifty-five dollars. So that five hundred and fifty dollars or whatever is on your tax bill right now, it's called non-adequate valorum assessment on the bottom, will go down by three hundred and fifty-five dollars approximately. So you'll be saving that. Also, the county has on your FPNL bill a thing called the utility service tax. It's a ten percent tax that the county, that the county collects on your electric bills. So your electric bill should go down about ten percent. So if you have roughly a three hundred dollar bill every month, that'll save you about three hundred and sixty dollars. So the credits or the offsets to the property taxes, about seven hundred dollars that you'll be saving. So a lot of you mentioned my taxes will be going up about four hundred dollars because I've been here for a long time. If you've been here for a while, I've, I've seen a lot of your taxable values. They're a hundred thousand dollars or less or, and your taxes will go up six hundred and ten dollars. If, if your taxable value is a hundred thousand dollars, your, your taxes, you'll have a new taxing district on your tax bill. It'll say taxing district, town of Lake Clark Shores, six point one mils. It will go up six hundred and ten dollars per hundred thousand. So if you've been here for a long time, you, you're not really going to have a, a tax increase. You might have a tax decrease. Now, unfortunately, I'm sorry for the people that just moved here, because unfortunately, your taxes will go up maybe fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars minus the seven hundred dollars. So if, if you've been here for more than five to ten years, you're probably not going to see a major increase. But if you've been here three to four years, yes, unfortunately, you will see a thousand dollars or fifteen hundred dollar increase. And I can figure that out for you. I figured out about ten of you, when you called, I went over Papa, you, you just look at your taxable value. You times it by six point one mils. Again, if it's a hundred thousand, it's six hundred and ten dollars. So you pretty much break even with the town. So those are the costs and those are the benefits. And the, I obviously recommend we pass this, and it goes on to the county. It's scheduled for November twenty-first. And then if that is adopted, it will be execute, it will become effective as of the date they pass it. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Any questions from the council? Vice Mayor?
The, I, I think everybody should appreciate what I understand it to be, is that you do have a voice and you do have a vote, and that's when you should go see your Palm Beach County Commission. They are the ones that are listening to your vote. We listen to the residents here in Lake Clark Shores. And that which we have appreciated over the many years are the dollars that the town residents of Lake Clark Shores have spent in monitoring your neighborhoods for safety and providing you the services over the many years. And if you are up here and you saw what we see with regard to the dollars that we spend as a municipality, I think that you would hopefully appreciate, we're trying to be, we're trying to perform our due diligence as best as possible. For me to sit in your shoes, I understand exactly what you're talking about. Benefit detriment, we deal with that every day, and you should do, you should also appreciate that and weigh that in how you wish to proceed. The representative that you reached out to, County Commissioner Barnett, I'm sure is going to be very receptive to your, to your, your, your pleas. You did not vote for him, but he represents you. And I think that you need to reach out to him. That is your vote. For us to say that you do not have a vote, you do have a vote. We're not taking anything away from you from seventeen seventy-six on. You do have a vote. Please go to the county commission and voice your concerns. We appear have a fiduciary responsibility to our residents, and we think that we're doing the best we can. So I just want you to appreciate that. The definition that you appreciated with regard to an enclave, I, I think is, is, is not the legal definition. I'll leave that to other lawyers to appreciate the legal definition, should you ask. But the you, Edgewater Park is now an enclave. That's pursuant to the, to the Florida statutes. And as such, we're trying to eliminate that. Mr. Sanchez, I don't know the answer to your question with regard to the county eliminating all of the unincorporated areas or all of the enclaves. I can speak to, I believe they want to eliminate the enclaves. But you also must appreciate that when they allow the annexation into, for example, Lake Clark Shores, I think they lose some revenue. So to what extent they're in favor of that, I don't know at this time. But I do know that that was a conversation that was had a while back. I also appreciate the fact that there were notices required to be sent by the Florida, by one of the the chairman of this committee, the chairman of this legislative committee a couple of years ago, and I believe that notice, notices were sent to all of the people in the Edgewater Park. And the response was you did not want to be annexed. And we communicate, do you all remember that? Okay, because I did. And the, what I thought was interesting is when I heard this request from the representative, I looked at the, the town administrator's name was Dan, Dan Clark at the time, and so we sent out those letters. And then we had to inform the legislator of the results, and I think the results were overwhelmingly, you didn't want to come in. However, I still want you to appreciate the fact that we up here had to establish and maintain our fiduciary responsibility to our residents. So hopefully you will respect our, our actions as we move forward. Thank you very much.
President, excuse me, ma'am. President Proton?
Yes, I, I have a few comments. And when David McCamell, I know David forever, when he was getting up and talking, I, I have, I have some concerns that he brought up and from Bob's perspective, it is our fiduciary duty to our town. You're, you're the persons who spoke here tonight. They're not our constituents. However, I think there's a couple things I can kind of share with you that I, I would see troubling in our shoes. One of the issues I, I just started thinking about is I heard everyone talking is like, how do we enforce code in your enclave? And are you grandfathered in? You know, because there may be things that you've done or had at your house that you never had a code enforcement because you're in the county. And so, yeah, we are basically telling you, when you become part of our town, you're part of our rules and regulations and codes. And, and we're changing our codes all the time. We just went through this amazing process of changing trailers, things of that nature. I think our codes will be stricter than the county's codes in many respects. So I, I would be concerned about that from your perspective.
I can answer that.
Yeah, how, how does that work?
Normally, you, after the survey, if we see anything, obviously, we'll let you know. But if, if there's something there that, obviously, it's safety, but you can't be grandfathered in. That's not allowed. But let's say there is something that would be allowed in the county and would not, would not be allowed in this town. You can grandfather. That's up to the council. We can make an agreement where it's, it's basically said that that homeowner, until they sell that house, is grandfathered in.
I mean, to me, that seems fair.
So we will bring that, we'll bring that back.
Okay, that, that was one concern. So grandfathering code.
Yes.
The, you do get significant savings on your garbage bill and all of that stuff. And, you know, as, as we tell you, I believe our police officers drive through your neighborhood anyway. Just as courtesy, we do have a very good police department. They work very hard. And, but there is one nice thing we have in our town, and that's the, when you go on vacation, they go to your house every day, sometimes twice a day to check on your house, free of charge. There's a lot of benefits that the police department gives you that you don't have now. When I first came on council in two thousand and six, the sheriff tried to take over our town to become the sheriff, you know. It was very expensive. It was double the cost. Well, at first he teased us with this, you know, the introductory APR rate. And then, and then we figured it out. When we went down the road, this APR was going to turn into some, something that was horrendous. So we decided not to go with the sheriff. And then he, and then he went around to a lot of other places and got towns. And then I think he just, his agencies become way too big. We have that nice benefit in this town of having a small town. However, everything that I've heard from every resident, not our residents, but everybody from Edward, I think it all makes sense. I, I urge you to talk to your county commissioners or commissioner, whoever it may be, and bring up these points. That, you know, I was a part of the process of hoping that you would voluntarily want to come in here. I remember working with our former town manager, her name is Joanne Hatton, and we worked on trying to do that. We, we've always wanted to invite areas in. However, I'll just be very personal. I don't want, I don't know if I want you to be a part of our town if you don't want to be here. Yeah, and I, and I, and I kind of say that in a, in a weird way, because I don't, I, there's nothing worse than involuntary servitude. And I don't want to bring you in and be a part of us if you all really don't want to be a part of our town. Because we are a really nice town. We really get along. We are a very cohesive community. Our cops know everybody here. In fact, you probably don't know this, this police officer, raise your hand back there, how many years with PBSO? And you know what? He does not take a salary working here. Never has. This is a type of police officer, thirty-six years PBSO came and volunteered and works. So we have some really nice benefits here in this town. And, and, you know, and I, I can only implore to want to have you here, but I can understand why you would not want to have your taxes increased. Taxes are horrendous. Have you looked at what the school board charges you? And I never once had a child in school, and I have five. It was like, I can't believe I had to pay that every year.
You're still, you're still paying it.
No, we die. And we stop paying taxes. Nothing, pay taxes. So I'm just saying, I hear what you're have, what you all are saying up there. And it, every point you make makes perfect sense to me. I understand your perspective.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gosh, we certainly find ourselves in a pickle here, don't we? You guys are very nice to come out this evening. So this is the audience participation portion. How many of you folks live in Lake Clark Shores? Come on, council members, you guys got to do this, too. All right, put your hands down. How many of you live in the unincorporated Palm Beach County? All right. Thank you for coming. Hey, you voted twice. How many of you folks have lived in both unincorporated Palm Beach County, in the enclave is what it's called, and also in Lake Clark Shores? So a much smaller segment of us, and, and my story, before I tell you just a little bit about my experience. Joe did a very good job of selling Lake Clark Shores. So thank you. He's a very intelligent gentleman. He is incredible with finances and, and really keeps all of us together. We're, but I realize we're not here to sell you. You also forgot the flock camera system that reads all the license plates that we have in the town and, and is actually kind of a nice benefit that we would add towards that. So, but we're not here to sell you. Really, the purpose of tonight is to listen to you. And I really appreciate that because I have a list of, you know, your comments. And, and truly, honestly, thank you. Because at the end of the day, if this goes forward, and much to Mr. Rodriguez's point, you know, if we're not here listening to you guys and we're just kind of trucking along, you know, we've just inherited ninety
Ninety.
Ninety-eight
Parcels.
Parcels of land with more residents in those homes that aren't going to be very happy with us. And I think that, that by understanding tonight's vote and understanding what it is that we're actually going to vote on, this is our local municipal level way of saying, hi, we're Lake Clark Shores, Palm Beach County. This is our ability to at least engage in the conversation with Palm Beach County. Now, with your input, both here and also in Palm Beach County, that's going to make that conversation a little bit more fluid. And look, if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. I get it. I understand. But I think that by zooming out and understanding community, and, you know, my family moved in and the unincorporated side in, in nineteen ninety-two, like right before Hurricane Andrew. You know, I loved it there. But I always also understood the difference between the unincorporated side and Lake Clark Shores. Not that it was better. Although a lot of Lake Clark Shores people may think that. And that's inside jokes with the unincorporated folks. And I want to speak candidly, and I want to speak freely with, with you folks that have, that have come tonight. I always knew that there was that distinction. You know, Palm Terrace was like the demarcation zone. You know, my dad said, do not ride your bike past there. Do not go into Lake Clark Shores. And eventually I did end up venturing into Lake Clark Shores, and, and I had a lot of friends in Lake Clark Shores growing up. And Palm and, and some, some of the other roads in Lake Clark Shores provided a safe haven for me as a young boy to, to ride my bike and to kind of get to know some of the neighbors. and to kind of get to know some of the neighbors. And let me tell you, Lake Clark Shores, when I was a kid, trick or treating and we're almost at that point, was amazing. Uh, I remember getting full-size Snicker bars and a lot of the, the, the neighbors would actually come out and have like popcorn and stations. It was, it was neat. Um, that distinction was there, but you know, I digress because at this one particular story, I was riding my bike, we ended up finding a, a baby duck. Uh, duck had been injured and, uh, one of the Lake Clark Shores young boys' residents. Um, we decided to mend it. We called the, um, the local animal shelters. And that was my first interaction with Lake Clark Shores Police Department. Um, and they stopped and they took their time, you know, getting to know us. Even though I didn't live there, uh, this young man did. But, uh, and I think I, I was at twenty-three eleven Edgewater Terrace, by the way.
What happened to the duck?
Yeah, the duck ended up making it. Um, the Lake Clark Shores buddy ended up rehabbing the duck and, uh, and I made a friend. But, um, again, we're, we're not here to, to sell you on this stuff. Um, I'm really appreciative of your ability and time to come in and, and spend time with us and talk to us. And instead of thinking, instead of, uh, I hope that you would think of Lake Clark Shores in the future, we're in addition to. And when I started thinking about it just a bit, you know, your voice in Palm Beach County is a small voice in a very large, uh, operation. And it's frustrating when you want to see something happen or when you want to see something, uh, get done or when you want to, when it's the, it's the right time for you as a resident, as a citizen, to get involved with, uh, the county in a meaningful way. Such as this moment, this moment is that critical time that you, and it may have been years that you haven't been in front of, you know, your representative or in front of Palm Beach County. And so this is the time, this is that opportune time that you need critically to go and talk to somebody in Palm Beach County. I hope they're receptive on this and any other future, uh, issue. And so the way that we have it set up, you know, on any given week, I respond to multiple different phone calls or text messages that people are either asking for questions or asking truly for their input and, and their advice. And that's not something you can necessarily put a price on. And, and I get that. And at the end of the day, there's a lot of, uh, issues going on economically. Uh, we have higher interest rates, we have higher insurance bills. Uh, you know, taxes are always an issue. And I, I think that we're extremely mindful of that. But in that same vein, I think that we're the ones that are going to go to bat for you guys because it's a small number of us. And if it's any proof, we've negotiated so hard and we fought so hard with waste management to bring down that, uh, that bill, that monthly bill, and to actually absorb it as a municipality and not pass it on and, and not kick it on to you, you know, to, to our residents. And so, you know, that's, that's something that we can't put into, into dollars and cents. And, you know, thinking about it and, and putting this whole thing on a timeline, you know, sometimes you have to hug the cactus. And did we do the best job at, um, I'll use the word pitching it to you guys? Maybe not, but certainly this is an opportunity and this is a forum that we can hopefully work together. And if we zoom out and we think about it and, and we really have, um, a sense of community, we, we all see the map. Uh, I wouldn't say it's a donut hole, but it's, it's kind of small. And, um, and, but, but to that point, it's something that, you know, certainly the sense of community, uh, we would be able to bridge that gap and, and, and welcome you guys. And I know that a lot of you are shaking your head and saying, no, thanks, don't need you. I'm fine on my own, I get it, I understand. Uh, this is coming from somebody that's lived in both places. So I do want the takeaway. I know you guys have pointed your fingers at you guys and this and that, you know. So I hope you understand where we're coming from as a community. Um, and, and our vote tonight, our decision this evening is not the final thing. Uh, it is our ability to allow our manager, um, and also us as a community to go and at least start the conversation, have the conversation. And if that, the conversation doesn't work for Palm Beach County or for us, it's a walk away and it was nice of you folks spending a couple hours with us this evening. Thank you.
Councilman Maples.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. And I'd like to start, um, by saying, you know, a lot of times when you come to these meetings and different folks get up and it's difficult sometimes to feel like you're being heard. And I can assure you, this council is listening and we're all taking our individual notes. I have the names of every person that spoke here and their concern. So first and foremost, I want to say you, we, we hear you. Um, and then also I want to say, you know, you guys have a very powerful community. I mean, you, everyone who raised their hand from Edgewater is here tonight. That speaks volumes. Uh, and a lot of you chose to get up and speak and have the courage to get up to this podium here on the island and speak to us and share your concerns. And I heard a lot of it about taxes. I'm a finance guy and that's what I do for a living. So I understand that no one wants to pay more in taxes, absolutely nobody. Um, but we all understand that it's kind of a necessary, I don't want to call it evil, but necessary to keep things running. And with that being said, um, I want to reiterate, November first, twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Is the Palm Beach County, County Committee, County Commission meeting, November twenty-first, where you will be able to again have the opportunity in front of that board and speak and make sure they understand exactly how you feel. And again, I, I recommend you guys showing up in numbers. Um, there's power in numbers. And begin to speak to them and again, avoid your concern, not only to this council, but to that board as well, to make sure your voice is being heard. Um, and so again, November twenty-first for that Palm Beach County meeting. And I definitely appreciate each one of you coming to speak to this council and making sure that we understand your concerns. And however this thing shakes out, I want to tell you, either way, the Lake Clark Shores community will welcome each and every one of you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good, thank you. Um, I want to cover Charlie. I want to talk to you about, uh, Mr. DeLong's question regarding the statute. I don't know if you wrote that down. Mr. DeLong, what statute was that you, uh, referenced?
One seventy-one.
One seventy-one?
Homestead, uh, oh.
Homestead law, I don't happen to have that one. But I do know it's a Florida statute.
Yeah, okay, I just would like the attorney to clarify that for you, sir.
The annexation will not in any way, shape or form affect the homestead law. Uh, your property, if you live there, uh, is your homestead, if it's your primary residence. And if you have applied for the homestead exemption of the, up to fifty thousand dollars of the property value, that will remain. The fact that you are in the county or the possible future that you're in the town will not affect that homestead in any way, shape or form.
Follow-up question, um, that, that didn't answer my question. My question was, Florida statute one seven one point oh four one three, paragraph two. It says the ordinance shall be submitted to the vote of the registered electors.
Okay.
Of the area. I think that's a violation of homestead.
Now, let me, let me explain the statute to you. And there are two types of laws in the state of Florida. The general laws, which are Florida statutes, which apply to everyone, and the laws of Florida, which are special acts of the legislature that is, that apply to smaller groups of people in a specific area within the state. And both are in play with this annexation. Chapter one seventy-one is the statute, the general law dealing with annexation. It provides for annexation involuntarily and annexation voluntarily. And what you're referring to is the voluntary annexation section, which gives you as residents of the area being considered the right to vote as to whether or not you want to be annexed. Last year, uh, twenty twenty-two, the state legislature considered the issue of your area. And in the laws of Florida, chapter twenty twenty-two dash twenty, uh, two thirty-two, section two, they concluded, this is the state legislature, notwithstanding any law to the contrary, and the law that you're referring to that is to the contrary is one seventy-one, notwithstanding any law to the contrary, for all purposes of municipal annexation under part one of chapter one seventy-one Florida statutes, the territory described in section one, which is your area, shall be considered an enclave of the town of Lake Clark Shores. That action of the Florida legislature allowed for the involuntary annexation, which requires an interlocal agreement between the town and the county. And that's what the town is considering tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Point of order. Uh, if I can just have, um, everybody come up to the microphone.
Please, come, come up to the microphone, please. I'm sorry. We're just trying to make sure everybody understands.
Michael DeLong, for the record. I understood what you said, Mr. Attorney. Um, my follow-up question is, if what you said was correct and if it is that important to annex us, um, why didn't whichever one of you council people, um, are in that enclave ever talk to me or anybody else, for that matter, who is the council person?
Nobody, nobody lives in the enclave. Nobody on this council lives in the enclave.
No, my question, that wasn't my question. My question is, assuming that what he said is correct and assuming that you guys annexes.
Per char, it's at large.
I, I thought it would be a, a really good idea that maybe the council person responsible for that sector should have spoken to us, maybe. But I don't, I don't.
We're, we're all, we're all responsible here. There are separate seats, but we speak to every resident. There is no.
There's no district.
This person, that person, like your state representative, your senator, have different sections. We don't.
So you don't have any districts within.
There's no district.
You have access, you have access to every county.
It's at large.
I don't think that's a very good idea, but.
Well, it gives you the power of five versus one.
Pardon me?
Gives you the power of five versus one.
I, I understand that.
Yes, okay. Ma'am, would you like to speak? Yes, ma'am, come right up.
I'd just like to point out that, that, uh, that was passed, uh, was, uh, because somebody in this town wanted it passed and, uh, put it to, uh, our representatives. So it's not like the state wanted us to be an enclave. It's like you wanted us to be an enclave.
They have these situations, sir, please.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Turn again, I'm being very liberal here with everyone. I understand, but you can also speak too.
So, so that is.
That's true. And when I get to my comments, possibly you'll understand that a little bit more. Because we, we all, like I said, this is not something we have rushed into. We've considered everybody's. I know people who live over there. I've lived here for my entire life since nineteen seventy on the chain of lakes. I know people throughout this community, your enclave. I know people over there that are for it also. So we have exasperated all of our avenues to see what's happening, look at it across the board and then make a responsible decision. And I have to agree with the vice mayor, this is partially if you dis chair a responsibility, which I will cover in part of my comments that I'm going to give also.
But you are correct, the legislative act, the special act of the laws of Florida was enacted by the legislature at the request of the town of Lake Clark Shores.
That's what I wanted everybody to understand.
At, Mr. Mayor.
That's, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if we could have her name and an address.
Pardon me?
My name is Sally Pisano, two two seven five Edgewater Drive.
Thank you, thank you.
Would you like to come up, sir? No? Okay, all right. So, oh, that's not true. Uh, the president protest that he has some concerns. So we don't operate like that here. I want you all to know that. We don't operate and the residents that are here know that we kind of vet a lot of stuff. We take the questions. Yes, sir.
Can I just take a straw poll? So I know whether I need to stay all night, my name again is Still John Eads. Who, are you going to vote yes on this?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna cover that. That's an unfair question, sir. We're, we are going to vote on.
I'm sorry, I'm not acquainted with the, you know.
We're, we're gonna vote on that, okay? Now, now it's my turn to talk. May I have my comments? Let's hear my comments and then I'll take some more questions. I'm happy to. We can stay here as long as we need to, to talk. If you don't talk to us, we don't know what you're thinking. Okay, so, uh, the first thing, Lieutenant Fisher?
Question is.
Hold on, sir, hold on, let me talk and then I'll let you come back up. It's my turn. No, not right now, sir. I, neither can I, I'm wearing my hearing aids. Sir, go ahead.
I got a hearing aid.
I have two also, they drive me crazy.
The question on my mind, and I'm certain with the rest of the group here is, will we have the opportunity to vote yes or no to be annexed? Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, oh, that was good covering, good job, good job. Lieutenant Fisher?
Yes, sir.
Are most of the officers in the town of Lake Clark Shores still dual-trained in first responders also?
A few.
I, I know that change is because we are a stepping stone to the sheriff's office. Uh, we're a small community that does a lot with a little. So some of you still are, correct?
There's a few of them, yes.
And we, do we have a number possibly?
And we have defibrillators and, and we have the defibrillators.
Three, all of us are CPR and AED, which is standard for law enforcement.
Yes.
There's three of us that are EMTs.
That's.
Three of you are EMTs also.
Yes.
Very good. And what's the average response time in Lake Clark Shores?
Roughly two, three minutes at the most.
Three minutes would be a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Um, that's if you caught a red light and were polite and had to go to the north side. So three of them are EMTs. We have a defibrillator.
In every car, I believe.
So first responders, we still do get assistance from the sheriff's department in certain aspects. Yes?
Yes.
Anything we need.
And also we have an agreement with, uh, Palm Springs.
Correct.
Which could also respond there too.
Correct.
Which would only increase the response time from a public safety issue. So we all share the same, uh, fire rescue. Fire rescue serves them, serves us.
Palm County Fire Rescue, correct, will still.
So do you, as a police department, currently respond to any calls in this enclave or this area here that we're talking about?
No, but if the sheriff's office requested us, you know, from.
Have we ever responded? To your knowledge, we haven't? No? Okay, well, I.
We would if they did.
Of course, we would, we would be obligated to.
Yeah.
Correct? All right, so I think that there was a number that, uh, through the previous town manager that was deducted was that, uh, the town of Lake Clark Shores from a variety of different public services have rendered over the years approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. That was what started to generate this, uh, five or six years ago. I, I don't know that number, don't hold me to the exact numbers because you folks, I'm guessing, are all going to go to the county meeting, which I encourage. And, and, and that's a good thing. Is it possible, um, Charlie, I know you're not a real estate agent, but is it possible that the properties could increase in value by being annexed into Lake Clark Shores?
I do not know the.
You don't know that, okay.
That, that's why I covered.
But it is possible because anything is possible. Yeah, it, it's possible. Um, I've spoken to some of the realtors that live over there already. So we are not taking this lightly. Yes, ma'am, you've had your hand up. Come on up, come on up, you gotta come up.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Speaking about the police in an emergency.
Uh, what's your address, ma'am, and your name?
Heidi Duda, twenty-three eighty Palm Road.
Okay, thank you.
In an emergency, always the police from West Palm Beach come, why?
I'm sorry, I speak into the microphone. By hearing aids, you're working properly.
She said in emergency that the, the officers from West Palm Beach usually show up, but.
West Palm Beach?
That's what she said, but maybe.
Well, I know there's a couple of officers from the city of West Palm Beach that live over there.
Yeah, but I don't have, I'm here.
Uh, that's a Palm Beach County Sheriff's jurisdiction, isn't it?
Correct, she lives in Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so those are just a few of the things. You heard the manager talk about some of your advantages. Uh, there will be decreases, there may be some increases. It all depends on when you purchase and that kind of stuff. So is. So is there any other for the good of the order?
Yes, there's one more audience comment right here.
Yes, ma'am. Come right up. It's okay.
Carolyn Bell again. I just have a question, because I'm, I'm trying to understand all this.
Sure.
So because it's an involuntary annexation, yes, we can all go to the meeting with Palm Beach County, but does that mean that we will not be able to vote as the enclave towards it, that Palm Beach County, regardless of, in other, in other words, we can go there, but the decision doesn't, doesn't involve us, correct?
You, you can go there and persuade them to see things your way. But once we take a vote on this, and if this does pass, then it moves on to the county commission.
Right. So I'm just trying to.
And they have to put their blessing on it in order to, to.
Right, so that.
To implement the interlocal agreement.
So we can voice what we feel and everything, but basically, they can, they're pretty much going to do what they want.
Yes.
Well, I'd like to think they're gonna do what you want.
Well.
You'll do the same thing. There'll be, there'll be comment cards that you'll fill out. They'll have an agenda. They'll come to the time. Like I said, they're going to be a lot less lenient than we are. You're going to get your three minutes, and that's going to be that. And you'll have your say. And, you know, if you're feeling strongly about this, we recommend that you go there for sure. I mean, you know.
And my other question is, like, say, obviously, when this is finished tonight and everything, we go to that other meeting. Uh, once they, they have their vote at that meeting, does everything happen very quickly?
Happens immediately.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out. So now, in.
Your taxes won't be till next year, but the increase in your taxes won't be till next year.
In, in the case of that, though, will we be given instructions about, like, you know, the garbage? Like, is something going to be sent out?
We will communicate with you, yes.
Yes, and you can always call me.
We believe communication builds bridges and not walls.
All right, so, all right, great.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may?
Yes, of course.
So just to be clear, so we understand kind of the timeline and the continuum. You guys are very much welcome here this evening. Thank you. Again, I want to reiterate that. But your emphasis and your focus, you know, although we're listening, please, you're, you know, direct that to Palm Beach County, because this is, again, a municipality, us, Lake Clark Shores and Palm Beach County. Um, and obviously, we know how agreements work. There needs to be two parts of the equation. Right now, you folks are on the Palm Beach County side of the equation. And so I really implore you guys, I recommend that you please spend some time with your Palm Beach County representative and attend that meeting. Because really, truly, what happens here this evening, this is just our manifestation of our residents and, you know, what we are looking for in the future to now get in, uh, have an agreement or a conversation with Palm Beach County. So please, your focus, your energy, although we hear you, and it's very important, because in the future, we want to build bridges. We've gone back and forth several times with questions. We want to make sure that this is something, you know, we're, we're, we're building and maintaining a community here. And so Palm Beach County, at this current stage, is your outlet, is your way to be part of this in a meaningful way.
Yeah, everybody's good. Okay, so at this time, we'll consider a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-two, authorizing the mayor to execute the interlocal agreement with Palm Beach County for the annexation of Edgewater Park.
So moved.
Oh, second?
A second.
Second?
A second.
Yes, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Harry's five-zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. Approval of a license agreement within the bordering community park.
Good night, good law.
To KMR LLC, owner of fifteen-oh-one Forest Hill Boulevard. Mr. Scheck?
At our last meeting, we discussed the issue of providing the ability of the fifteen-oh-one Forest Hill Boulevard to have a.
Folks, if I may remind everyone, the meeting is not over. If you would like to leave, please leave quietly.
Yeah.
Uh, let's take a five-minute recess.
Have a good night. Oh, you're staying.
How are you?
Manic gives up.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, absolutely.
How are you, David? It's good seeing. Thank God. I've been doing good. How about you?
What we need to do is.
It's good to see you.
What is your.
Did a great job. Thank you for all of your support.
So what, if you're okay with that?
Yes.
Uh, no, that's sufficient. We just don't need add title. I can just strike out add, and we can just have title there.
Move to item number eight, which is unfinished business, the approval of a license agreement within and bordering community park to KMR LLC, owner of fifteen oh one Forest Hill Boulevard, Mr. Scheck.
So, the property at fifteen oh one Forest Hill Boulevard needed to have fire suppression, basically fire sprinklers, it had to have a certain amount of water pressure in order to meet the county requirements for fire suppression. And the best way to provide that was to allow the installation of a water main on the subject property at the edge of the town's park. The initial request was for an easement, and at our last meeting, it was my recommendation that the town consider giving the property owner the right to install the fire suppression water line on the park property, but to do it as a non-revocable license rather than an easement. And this document that is before you does just that. The difference between the easement and the license is that an easement gives a person a property interest in the property. Both documents allow for the installation, repair, maintenance of the water line, but the license does not give an ownership interest in the property. And it's my recommendation that the town council favorably consider granting the license to the property owner.
Okay, any council comments?
I've had an opportunity to review the licensing agreement with Mr. Scheck, and we've gone over it, made some suggested edits, and thank you, Mr. Scheck, for reaching out. And I think by passing the, this, in this fashion by a license agreement is, I think it's just, it's just better governance for the town. We still own the property, an easement, you're not gonna, you're gonna lose ownership of the property.
You own, in the easement, you own the underlying fee, but your underlying fee becomes subservient to the dominant purpose of the easement.
Couldn't have said it any better than that.
That's what we learned in law school.
Yeah.
Like about forty years ago, but none of us remember it.
Well, now you just had a refresher course.
Oh, no, it's horrible. I'm glad, Mr. Reddy, you're here today. Thank you for sitting through what you heard earlier for an hour, but thanks for coming.
And if you recall, it was Boyer on real estate.
Yeah, Boyer on real estate. Why was your older than me?
Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Maples, any comments?
Well, I'd love to nerd out about law school. I'd like to talk about the, I had a very nice conversation with Mr. Scheck and Mr. Labello regarding the removal of water mains at such time that the license becomes nonexistent or no longer necessary. Those were my real concerns. I think that you guys did a fantastic job addressing all of the other issues that will protect Lake Clark Shores for years and years to come, and also bring the buildings up to code. So, I think, and I want to thank everybody's involvement on this and all of your hard work. Thank you.
Mr. Maples?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you, Joe and team, for having some pictures for everyone in the audience for their, to be able to see that. My, one of my concerns with this is just the, you know, the last bullet point, private waterline be paramount to any of the future town use, meaning that they have superior rights to this private water line. Obviously, the licensing agreement is definitely more of a favorable from a fiduciary standpoint for the town. That's, that's perfect. And I guess that's my only concern about this is just the town not having the final buck stop on this thing, and I don't know if you can speak to that, Mr. Scheck.
Well, in the situation of an easement, the easement covers typically the surface of the property, the underground portion of the property, and the airspace of the property. We've limited this to a subsurface right, and the pipe has to be installed a minimum of four feet below the surface. So, we continue to have the right to use the, the park for, the property for park purposes, and we have also protected the vegetation, the trees, and the fencing that's on the property. So, their right is strictly to allow that pipe to be installed underground, minimum of four feet. If they ever have to come in and do any repair work, which would require any digging or excavation, they would have to restore the property to its condition prior to that excavation. So, we continue to use the surface for park purposes. They simply are using four feet below the ground for the installation of the pipe. And, and I think that works very well for all the parties concerned.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Consider a motion to approve the license agreement with KMR LLC.
So moved.
Second?
Second, doesn't matter.
All those in favor? Well, I can't make the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Gary's five zero. All right, let's keep moving, continue discussion on using a special magistrate for code enforcement, Mr. Labello.
And, and that's exactly what this is, is discussion. It's continuing that discussion from August, and I'll repeat, because I can't say this enough, I want to thank our board members that are in the audience, and also the two that are not here. They do an excellent job, they're good people, and I'd love to, we're still recommending that we go with a special magistrate, and we'd love for them to do other, serve on other boards and other needs the towns have. But we, we still haven't changed our mind. We, we believe the best course of the, the town in the future, and twenty years from now, is to, to have a special magistrate. And the reasons are, it's becoming a very difficult job, there's a lot of training that's involved now, there's so much more requirements from the state and the county on ethics and sunshine rules, you know, there's Form Six, who knows if ever, Form Six ever gets out to that level. But not only do they have to do those requirements and those required training, they also have to be educated on the town's codes and ordinances. So, it's a very difficult job. So, that's why most of the cities, the vast majorities of the cities in Palm Beach County use a special magistrate. There's, you know, I went over the numbers, there's only really two that are like ourselves. So, what's, let me go over what's the benefits of a special magistrate, and so I can clear up some of the things about costs and other things. Special magistrates are familiar with equal protection and due process requirements that will lessen the number of appeals and increase the favorable outcome of appeals. That is number one, because that's becoming a, a bigger, if you read about appeals and code, and code hearings, you'll see a lot of these are happening in Wellington and Broward, and obviously, as fines go up and up, people are gonna appeal them. So, we're gonna get all this money involved in defending these cases, and sometimes insurance does not even cover these things. We haven't had this problem, but I'm just saying what's out there, that the insurance doesn't even cover these things because they're not suing for a monetary damages, they're suing for, to change the ruling, that a lot of times, you're paying all these legal fees, and you might lose. So, that's a big thing that's happening. So, I think that's the best course of action, just on that number one, is, is a big deal. Let me go over the other ones. Special magistrates are trained to make decisions based on the application of laws to the facts, because they're usually town attorneys or judges. You only need one special magistrate to decide a case. They, they know about how to handle proceedings, court proceedings, the hearings are shorter, they do not need a quorum to proceed, only, we, we only need one special magistrate, so if, you don't need seven board members, two alternates, and, and all, all that makeup. I think we have to have four right now to have a quorum, which I never understood, that could be changed, by the way. Okay, so let me get to the fees, because I, I've heard that a lot about, it's gonna cost us more to have a special magistrate. Let me tell you how I'm familiar and my experiences with a special magistrate, how, how I'm familiar with it is, if there's two outcomes that can happen in a case, right? You can be either found guilty or innocent, right? If you're found innocent, yes, you will, no fees will be asked to be reimbursed. That is usually not the outcome. It's very, in my experience, most cases, when they get to the special magistrate, they're found guilty, maybe not even a fine, but they're found guilty to re, replace, I mean, reimburse fees. So, what does that mean, fees? So, if they're found guilty, and the experiences I've had, is the, the special magistrate will go to the code compliance officer and say, how much time have you spent on this case? And the code compliance officer said, I spent two hours on this case. So, two hours times thirty dollars, that's sixty dollars. Then they'll go to the town attorney and say, Mr. Town Attorney, how much time have you spent on this case, research and hear your presence? They'll say, one hour. Then the magistrate will say, I spent an hour on this too. So, they'll go over the fees, and they'll say, you have a fine of five hundred dollars for your violation, plus the fees are two hundred dollars for the magistrate, two hundred dollars for the town attorney, and sixty dollars for the code compliance officer, so an extra four hundred and sixty dollars. So, all your fees are basically reimbursed if they're found guilty. So, that's why the, the discussion of, if this is gonna cost more and hiring somebody's, I, I don't understand it, because it actually, in my experience, it actually costs less, because most of the fees are reimbursed. But that's not the reason why I'm bringing this up. It's just one of the reasons. Okay. Obviously, we've talked about the staff time, it's a minor part of it, but staff time will not be using overtime, because usually these special magistrate hearings are during the daytime. You have to train one special magistrate on code ordinances, it's very simpler, the simple, besides training a whole board. And using a special magistrate is usually more consistent on fines and, and on decisions. That's not saying this board is not doing that, but there's turnover on boards. So, then they, they look, when you go for an appeal, they look at your whole case history, and then they see what, what consistency you had on, on prior decisions that are very similar. Now, there's been some debate on this last one, I think it's a benefit, but you can look at it both ways. A special magistrate is a third party who does not live in town usually, or does not know the town, that when a special magistrate gets to the hearing, they don't know anything about the case. They sit there, and the town attorney and the, and the code enforcement officer has to make their case at the hearing. So, they're impartial, they don't know anything about the town, you have to prove the, so that's, to me, that's a benefit, because that, they're totally independent of the decision, and it usually holds up better, in my opinion, in case, in, in case law, or in case. So, those are the benefits, obviously, they can be debated, but that's my practice, I believe, for the long run, I think that's best for the town of Lake Clark Shores, and that's my job, is just to tell you that I think this is, there's a better practice out there, most of the municipalities have agreed with me, but if, if you don't agree, that's fine. But I'd like to ask you all to start, keep going with the discussion, have the town attorney draw up an ordinance, you have to have two more readings on this, so it'll be two more times we'll be discussing this, a first reading and a second reading where you have to vote. So, that's my recommendation.
Do we have any questions for the town manager from the council? Anyone?
I do. May I?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes, come on up. I've been waiting to talk to you for an hour and a half. How are you, Paul?
Good. Paul Hughes, nineteen twenty-five Antigua Road, member of the code board for.
Talk to me.
Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Twenty-some years.
Talk, talk to me, Paul. What's on your mind?
I think the, Mr. Mayor, board members, three of you, of which have served on the code enforcement board, so you're probably the most qualified to end up making a decision whether this is what you want to do. You all, as far as the town is concerned, have not dealt with a special magistrate, you've dealt with the code board, you know how we function, you have certainly, I think, all of you have been to our meetings since you've been on the code board. I'd like to thank Mr. Labello for spending time with me not too long ago, being very candid about his proposal. I am concerned, sir, that you made this decision of a proposal prior to ever coming to our code board, and you candidly said you have no experience with the code board.
That's correct.
Only with a special magistrate.
That's correct.
I would have hoped that you would have spent some time evaluating our performance and how we serve the community, and I think we've done one heck of a job for thirty, forty years, I'm not sure exactly how long the code board has been in existence, but I've probably been on it half of that time anyhow. I agree that the, the council should explore whether this is best for the town, there's no question about that. That's why we elected you to be here, is to serve the town and, and do the right thing. In this particular case, I think our present code board achieves all the goals you want us to achieve. I think we educate the community, I think we help to increase the property values, I think that safety is our number one purpose, as well as, as compliance. We have members in this community that have served on the board, you all, several of you, several other prior members of the town council have been on the code board, so you all have a really good idea of how well we function, and I, and most of you have come to us and said, we think you're doing a fantastic job. And to me, that means we're doing the right thing. I, I think, I'd like to say that I, I think that if, if what we've experienced is doing a good job, why try to fix something that's working well right now? Questions?
Well, I have a question. I want to comment about you, Paul, you know, as you're, as you're sitting here talking to us, I have all these memories of serving with you, you're so level-headed, I really appreciate that, you were always a very level-headed person, we were on the board together for years, I think I was on the board either nine years before I came on council, those back points of the years, I don't know, a long time, but I remember you, and you've been the chair for quite a while? Off and on for.
Probably at least ten.
Ten years, so you've been running the meetings, you've understood the issues of the residents, you know, remember the Barbie incident?
Yes, sir.
All of that, and we've always had some people who are repeat offenders, and, you know, you, you always kind of dealt with that, and you always sort of, you were very politically connected to understanding the dilemmas of people, which I think is helpful. I'm a little, so I'm a little concerned about magistrates, I've had nothing but bad experiences with magistrates in West Palm Beach. Years ago, I used to have to represent people who had to go in front of West Palm, and I had to go in front of this magistrate, and, you know, it's a, it's a lawyer, and then they feel like, you know, you can do no wrong, and you're not gonna get any sympathy because that person's getting paid by the town, and, you know, they're just looking at the facts and not really thinking outside of that, which in some respects may be the way it should be done too. But I just wanted to comment, thank you for your service, I, I remembered you as a very important aspect of it. Are you planning to stay if we keep a code board, are you planning to stay on it?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that was the next question. Thanks.
I, I would like to comment that I think the one thing that the board does do, our members, our members of this community, I think that we maybe shouldn't as much as we do take sympathy with people who, who don't understand the codes, when they come to us and act totally confused about why they're there and why this is happening, and we make an effort to explain those circumstances to them, and, and when, when we've reached a final decision in those cases, we go over what just happened with them, and what they need to do if they want to appeal it, or how they pay their fine. I don't know that all that will happen with a magistrate. Robert?
I'm very torn on this, and my time on, on code enforcement, honestly, it was, it was a necessary precursor to do what I'm doing today, because there is a learning curve. And, you know, I've, I've weighed this out pretty, for a very long time with, with Joe and with Jerry, I had a really nice conversation with, with Jerry, and, yeah, my simple question is, what is your opinion? What do you think? I think I'm hearing you, but I'd like to hear it in black and white. And, you know, I, there's pros and cons, because, and I'm just gonna kind of use this question kind of as a moment to comment, and I know I have a tendency to go on tangents, but for all of the black and white, by-the-book things that a magistrate would help us with in terms of liability and being more, I guess, consistent with results, the same thing that we are up here talking about Lake Clark Shores being a gem, it somewhat runs in, in conflict with that. So, I, I'd like to hear from Jerry, and I'd like to hear from Deb, if I may call you guys by your first names. But, you know, I, I do notice here that we have Palm Beach, wait, what is it? It's, sorry, Palm Beach, Delray Beach, I'm gonna leave Revere Beach out for a second, not that I have anything against it, I went to high school there, and South Palm Beach. And the, the reason why I'm bringing up those three municipalities is because, you know, they, they, I think they do a fine job self-regulating. My big concern is, is that if we have, and you, you talked a little bit about empathy, right? And I know that the Lake Clark Shores Code Enforcement Board, we are, it is a, and there isn't a quorum here, but there's, there's three out of the five of you. But I do know that you look at things not in the black and white sense, and although to a certain extent, you do need to be somewhat sterile, you can't quite turn off the person's individual situation or scenario. And to, and to that extent, although it's wonderful, and we are neighbors, that is something that could cause issues in the future. So, it, now, this is my only time and opportunity to kind of voice where my head's at. I would only be in agreement with a special magistrate if it were possibly on a temporary basis, to really see how it's going to impact. I, I'm fearful that if this is a decision that we now choose to take, that it is a forever and permanent decision that's very difficult to undo, and, and I don't want to undo all of the progress that we have made over the years, by and large, thanks to, to your leadership, Paul. So, I, I don't know how that looks, I don't know if there is a hybrid system, or if there's somewhat of a ability to integrate a magistrate into the board, and somewhat, you know, when you go play, when, when you go bowl, and you're a terrible bowler, you put up the little gutter guards, or if you don't, you don't know how to ride a bike, you, you have training wheels. And I'm not saying that we don't know what we're doing on the code enforcement board, and I know that Mr. Scheck does a fantastic job in keeping us legal, but somebody that may be in a research capacity that can say, look, on this specific issue, this is how the board has voted in the past. And I know that that's, at least from my particular experience, something that I didn't have access to, or wasn't readily available, of decisions that came, you know, some sort of, not a database, but decisions that are similarly situated, for example, a fence issue, or a sod issue, or a, you know, different thing, mailbox issue. Well, these are the past twenty-five mailbox issues that we have voted on as a board, and take a moment, and maybe it's, it's in notes or something, and I know that this is somewhat laborsome to have that, but something that we have more even-handed or more informed decisions.
I, I would just like to add, we, we achieve compliance, and that's our main job.
And that is correct.
Mr. Maples?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Paul, thank you for speaking, a couple of questions for you, and to speak to a few comments that are made from my colleague, but do you feel that we would lose this hometown kind of, lack of better word, Mayberry town kind of feel, I know that's a little, but do you feel we lose that by going to a magistrate?
Certain. Yes.
Do you think it would be helpful to maybe, I don't know, I'm gonna say rewrite the code, I'll leave that, check, but maybe having something that says we need maybe the next two guys to be attorneys that specialize in certain fields, so I don't know if that would be helpful to add that kind of language there, be advocating, was looking for those folks with that specific skill set to add to our code enforcement board to help.
I think, I think we have a, a list of recommended experiences, and I think, I'm sure attorneys are, gotta be on that list.
And so, maybe advocating will help bring those folks to the table, and I agree with you, I think, as you said at the onset of your comments, is that, you know, exploring what it may look like, continue to look like, compare the two to make sure having the code enforcement board is in the best interest of the town, or is it a special magistrate? At this point, we're really, we don't know, right? And so, I think that's important, but I think maybe, you know, just exploring and making sure we're looking at, and I know we have five members now, the total of seven, that we really need, plus two alternates, so, you know, we have, obviously, you're a big part of the experience, and I'm sure they lean on you for a lot of those decisions and guidance, and some of the things that come back around and maybe you could see in prior votes. So, I just, you know, first off, like many here, I've kind of gone back and forth on this issue, trying to, and I've called you and spoke to you personally, and trying to get just some clarity on your thoughts on this whole thing, and I've taken in all the information, so I'm just thinking of other ways, maybe potentially be valuable to keep that integral part of the community together, while still being open to exploring what that looks like.
I, I would encourage you to speak to, to Jerry, and Deb certainly has a unique experience connected with Palm Beach's code enforcement, so.
Jeff, do you mind speaking to that? We appreciate your time.
Good evening, I'm Deb Moody, seventy-five ten Pine Tree Lane. I've only lived in Lake Clark Shores for about the last six years, and after I lost my husband three years ago, I decided it was an opportunity for me to have the time to get involved in the community. The experience that I have, I currently work for the town of Palm Beach, I've been there for nearly twenty-five years. My time with the town of Palm Beach started out in the building department, where I became involved with the code enforcement board. I am a level-one certified code officer. I don't live in that capacity in the town, but I had experience with the code board, I was the secretary for the code enforcement board, et cetera. I work for Fantasy Island, but I feel like I live on Fantasy Island, my own fantasy, and I really believe that being involved in the community where I live with the code enforcement board, I think it gives a unique feel to the community when we have people who come in front of us who are in violation, they can explain their side of the story, we take a look at the code, we have, you know, our conversation and make our decisions, we do collect fines or impose fines, but at the end of the day, a lot of those fines are waived once they come into compliance, but we do achieve compliance, and that is the goal. I think going to a special master sounds like it's gonna cost our community a lot more. All of the residents that have a violation will now be paying the town violation fee, the fine, they'll be paying the cost for the special master and the code officer. Currently, we're not passing those costs off to the homeowners. They'll be paying for their attorney to come and represent them in front of the special master, where right now, we've never, in my experience, I've not seen an attorney represent a homeowner in front of the board. I feel like as if, as a resident of the town, I think residents can come and talk to us, we've had a few people that, you know, get a little riled up, but for the most part, they speak to us very respectfully, and they listen to everything that, you know, our comments, what's said, and our rulings, but I think it's, it's not necessarily gonna be a good thing if we move to a special master.
Deb, let me ask you as a follow-up question. At what point do you feel like we would need a special magistrate in the town?
If we were as large. If we were as large as the city of West Palm Beach or as large as Palm Beach County or many of the larger jurisdictions, then maybe it would be a smart move to move that way. But I think it means more to our residents that the decisions that are ma- that are made that affect them directly is being made by another resident and not a stranger.
Nice question.
Yep.
Do you, do you feel that uh, you spend a lot of time educating residents?
We do. We do. We take that time to educate the residents.
And you feel like that's what the town should do?
I do. I think that's a bonus to the residents.
I served so, so many years on that code board and I really felt like it was, it was one of the reasons I became a council member in 2005 because I felt like I was connecting to people and then to the town. And I started understanding the importance of, you know, people being here and, and issues that come up and what's going on. And it was a really nice process because you come up here and you get to give back to your town and you're also helping to help people. And then you start seeing things that you didn't know existed around the town. You start learning about rules and you know, then you connect to the council members. I remember a lot of the council members I would go into the city at meetings because I'd like to tell them, hey, like, I think the sign ordinance is messed up. This is why, you know, and then there would be that good, you know, connection between the code board and the town. It's something I don't think you would really get from a magistrate.
No, I agree.
Thank you.
And we don't, we don't see, at least I have not noticed a huge amount of repeat offenders. We do get a few that are, the properties are repeat violations. But those are generally the people who don't show up for the meeting. So we're not having that communication with them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, the, um, Palm Beach has the, um, has the same setup as we have, correct?
That's correct.
Have you been involved in, uh, in their code enforcement?
Yes, sir.
And compare Palm Beach to Lake Clark Shores.
I live in Fantasy Island. I work in Fantasy Island.
I like that.
Well, I, you know, I'm sure there's
I'm looking for a tagline.
Yeah.
I'm gonna get a tagline here before it's over.
I've had the opportunity to talk to, uh, to Paul, had the opportunity to talk to Jerry. I've had also the opportunity to talk to code enforcement officer. And I've had an opportunity to talk to other members, former members of the, uh, the code. Uh, I'm torn. I want you to know that. Um, I've come to the code meetings and I, I have come and said, I think y'all are doing a good job. Keep up the good work. And um, I'm, I'm still gonna say that, keep up the good work. The uh, what I indicated to um, I was concerned when I talked to a former member of the code board and they said, Bob, you wouldn't believe this. They followed me home and yelling and screaming at me. And I'm going, you gotta be flipping kidding me. And uh, I was surprised at that. I mentioned it to Jerry, mentioned it to Paul. And now you, for the first time, are hearing it. And maybe, I'd like to think it was a very isolated uh, isolated incident. The um, I'm reading the, the report. Um, what do you think about our, our code enforcement officer?
Oh, I think it's great. I think our new code officer is great. Um, spending full time out there, noticing the violations and bringing them to us.
Have you seen your caseload increase?
It has increased, which is not a bad thing.
Well, I see here, this is last month, 30 cases were referred to the code board.
Right.
The um, it was interesting that I was listening to Mr. Gonzalez and I was, I wrote down hybrid. I don't know whether or not we could do a hybrid application somehow or another. Just a thought that came to me. I don't necessarily agree with Mr. Gonzalez that if the switch is made, it's gonna be permanent. I know the anything is permanent when you have five individuals up here uh, at any given, any given meeting. But uh, I wanted to, uh, I wanted to address quite possibly a hybrid. And I don't know whether it's uh, it's the different type of violations that go to the code officer versus the ones that stay locally. But uh, maybe that's something I can ask staff to look into with the guidance of uh, of Mr. Scheck. But I'm influenced by my relationship with uh, with Paul and Jerry over the years, uh, Ariel and, and the former members. And I know that there was comes, some concern about consistency. And the um, the, how can I say it politically correct? The uh, I don't wanna say even-handedness, but at the same time, I guess that goes into consistency. Why one would get this one and one, you know, what's a $25 a day fine versus a fifth, a $250 a day fine? I've always maintained when I was the chairman of the code board, that we were the velvet-covered hammer. And uh, I got a reputation of being one of the bad boys. And uh, the other bad boy was a gentleman by the name of Greg Casey. And we started levying $200 a day fines, $250 a day fines. And um, it's amazing how the uh, the, the cases that came in front of the code board leveled downward. All of a sudden, they weren't there as much. And I don't know the type of message that was sent way back when. Cause we did have, uh, we went through several code enforcement officers, not the hybrid officer that we have with, you know, Lieutenant Fisher that was doing double duty.
Right.
So I think there's a benefit of having a, a dedicated code enforcement officer. But um, uh, you know, Jerry reminded me of a comment. He says, well, you know, maybe it's not too bad being compared to Palm Beach. Am I right? So um, I don't know whether it'd be Fantasy Island comparison, but I, I do respect you, the time that each and every one of you devote. Cause I know it's a thankless job at the, at the end. But I, I think what we're looking for is consistency and we are looking for compliance. And um, that I think is, is the, 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 that's pushing us toward um, looking at something new. You know, the um, you know, the, the old Lebanese saying, a new broom sweeps clean, but an old broom knows where the dirt is. You know, so it's something that uh, we should take into consideration. And as I said, Deb, I'm, I'm torn. I'm not, uh, I'm not a hundred percent for it. And I don't wanna lose the momentum that y'all have gained. And I think that's the key. Cause I think there was a, a time in which there were some issues there. And I think you've overcome tho- those hurdles, that speed bump in, in the road, if you will. And so um, I just want you to know my thoughts.
Mr. Shahoub, just to clarify, my fear was that it would be permanent. Not that I thought it would be permanent.
Mr. Mayor, one follow-up question, if you will.
Yep.
Deb, I know you said you guys typically waive the fines. Is that, um, cause I know one of the concerns, Mr. Labella was in like, hey, what are the costs to the town and staff and fines being waived? Is that standard? Is that uh, something that if we were to say, okay, hey, we're not gonna waive those fines any longer moving forward, just due to cost and covering the town's costs? Uh, is that something that in your experience is, but the town of Palm Beach, for example, is that typically the deal, they waive fines as well?
Well, once compliance is achieved, then they would have an opportunity to come back to the board and ask for a reduction of the fine. And when that has happened, we'll weigh the facts, weigh, determine what the violation was, how egregious the violation was, how long the violation went on. And then each case is determined individually. So I can't, I won't say that it's, you know, we always waive the fees or the fines, but we're open to waiving them if it's appropriate.
Okay.
And understand, of course, that's as long as the fine has not been reduced to a lien. Once the lien is filed, then the code board no longer has the jurisdiction. Then it becomes your jurisdiction.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask a question?
Is it possible, because I have the utmost respect for what the code enforcement board does. Your job is way harder than what we do up here, way harder. Would you say the code board in Palm Beach is a little more strict than the code board in Lake Clark Shores?
I would say yeah.
Yeah, they are.
They are. A lot.
I, just remember, I have nothing but respect for what you folks do. I believe that people will give what we're willing to take. Sometimes the waiving of the fines is not always the best thing. Sometimes you have to enforce that fine to get their attention. Um, and Dana knows, I get a lot of phone calls for whatever reason regarding code issues. Because the compliant people, they see what's going on and then they're frustrated by the non-compliant people. And a lot of the non-compliant people are repeat people. So I'm an explorer. I think, Charlie, we should explore the advantages and the disadvantages, but if we do decide to go with a special magistrate, it's not binding. Correct?
No. Depends on how your code is written.
Well, that's
It could be. It doesn't have to be.
That's where you're gonna enter into it. The ordinance would then come to us for discussion, cause I think it's definitely worth discussion to figure out, um, and even do an analysis of cost to see where we are with the special magistrate versus employees from the memo that I received. Uh, Paul, I did read your letter and Jerry, I think you sent one before also. Um, and so I just think that it's possibly a good idea for us to at least explore it and see what's, you know, in the best advantage to the town overall. Are all of the code board members familiar with equal protection and due process? Or is that what the attorney handles?
I would say
I know you're present at every meeting.
Uh, well, I have been involved with the code enforcement board with the town for approximately 30 years. But the last year, uh, Mr. Doni in my office has been handling the code enforcement board. And he has uh, served as a special magistrate for several cities in the past. I would say that most of the board members, when they start as members of the board are not familiar with it, but they become very familiar with it very quickly. And they are very astute to due process.
Which is good to hear.
And of course, the attorney is there to make sure that
Guide them.
Yes.
Just as you guide us.
But I, I have been extremely impressed with few exceptions of the quality of the code board.
Board, okay.
I got a question there.
Yes, yeah.
Ms. Moody, while you're here, okay, so this is the hypothetical example we're gonna give, ask you because looking at the minutes the minutes from your August meeting. And it was a particular case where there was a motion to reduce a fine from 11,550 to 1,155, so reducing it uh, to 10% of the fine. It was a vote three to two. You were against that along with board member Moody. It was an electrical war without a permit from Mr. Moore. So he ultimately got his fine reduced as long as he would pay it within 30 days of the order. So with, with a special magistrate, would we have that type of situation? Um, what, what happens, Charlie, functionally with, with, is that even possible?
Yes, the, the magistrate could do the exact same thing.
But, but, but it's just his decision and not a three-two vote or
Correct. His or her decision.
Yeah. So I, I guess the biggest problem I have, I mean, it works both ways. Is democracy the three-two vote? Or is democracy the magistrate making the decision, Bob, you know, like the judge does? And, and that's, you know, and I just pulled this example up from an August. You know, and I remember we had the same situations. We had Mr. Barbie who would come in over and over and over again. And I got so fed up with it, I, you know, we just had so many issues. It ended up becoming a lawsuit.
And, and you know better than I do, it's the difference of a bench trial versus a jury trial.
I know. And so you're the jury in essence. You were against that reduction of 90%. But you were outvoted three to two. So that's the, the process. And I, I'm certain people in this room, you know, have a problem with that process. Because is that fair? So the question becomes, what if somebody else has a similar situation and they ask for a vote and the vote goes two to three? Help me out here, Charlie.
It, it can happen. It does happen.
Well, it's also a case by case basis.
It's correct. It's on a case by case basis.
Right. So if it's always a case by case basis, you know, I'm just kinda torn here as well, like Bob said. But it sounded like the process worked amongst you, you know, you probably didn't like the result because you voted against it, but it was a three-two. You deliberated. How many people have been upset with me when my clients are found not guilty? Well, guess what? That's the process. So, you know, and that's the process we've all learned to live by, you know, and we don't second guess it. So, you know, process to me is important. And I know maybe in the long run, we're like thinking, well, that wasn't right because, you know, three people decided to reduce this fine at 90%. By 90% and the town didn't have anything to do with it, but I guess the town did.
The town does, uh, but we need to emphasize that whether it's a code board or a special magistrate, the town cannot tell them how to vote or how much to reduce or not reduce a fine. It's a quasi judicial board. It's independent. Uh, the magistrate is also independent and the appeal is not to the council, it's to the court.
We only come involved if somebody wants to reduce the lien down the road.
Correct.
So if that guy did not pay and is within 30 days and then the lien got imposed for 11,000, whatever, then he would have to come to us down the road and say, you know, these are my circumstances, you're out of the picture. I only use, I know that's a really interesting example, isn't it? I mean, to think about how it works. But I'm pretty sure there were ones that went the other way too. So you will, I assume that decision took a while and deliberated and went through the process and stuff. See, I, I just think that's important and I just don't think a magistrate would do that. I just don't think he will. I think he, how could he? You know?
He doesn't have a vested interest. And I feel like the members of the board being residents of the town, we have a vested interest on, in the cases. We're talking to our neighbors. In many cases, it's our neighbors that we're ruling for or against.
So three of five of you that day decided to have mercy. The other two didn't, but that's kind of the way it works. So I just, I just wanted to put that out to you, council members, as, as you think about this, then using that example.
Mr. Ma- Mr. Mayor, if I may ask, uh, Mr. Labella, a couple of questions?
Yes, please. Let's talk.
Um, and Mr. Labella, I, I hear some of the comments and reactions that uh, my fellow council members um, are angling towards. And my thought is the following. Assuming that these special magistrates, how easy are they or how um, available are they to attend a meeting? Is this something that uh, can be done on a monthly basis? And I have a reason why I'm asking in that way. Or is this something that we have to execute a contract with them and it's for a predetermined term?
It's all, all the above. Um, you, you, you actually have a meeting like the third Wednesday at nine o'clock every month. And we tell the magistrate, he or she, if there's, there's anything on the, the docket. And if there isn't, they don't have to show up. But if they do, if there's something, they show up. They, they put it on their calendar for, forever.
Okay.
Just like a meeting, yeah.
Okay. And the, the reason why I ask is, you know, to be a fully staffed or volunteer board, uh, we need seven. We have five. So I, I would tend to make the recommendation that we would only move to a special magistrate at such time that the membership of the board of the code board um, fell to four. And the reason why that is, is because four is what you need to have. And I'm, I'm not talking about just on any one given meeting. It would be appointed members of the board. So for example, it isn't just on a meeting that we have five board members, but only four showed up. It would be the situation where only four board members are appointed or actually enrolled, uh, enlisted. I'm not sure if that's the right word. Um, but that's where I'm thinking. My fear is, is that there may, and, and this is just as a contingency. So maybe, maybe the best way forward is to have a contingency to at least just say, look, if, if the eventuality happens that we cannot find folks to volunteer because your time is precious and, you know, God, God broke the mold when they made you guys. But if, if that board can't be fully staffed, then at that such time, But if, if that board can't be fully staffed, then at that such time, then we can go to a special master until such time we can find other volunteer members. Something like that. So that it's, go ahead, Deb.
Is the town looking to replace the missing board members now? Because I don't know that it's advertised that there are vacancies.
That's a great question or a great observation.
No, we're not seeking heavily. We didn't put in our, I would say we put it in our website. We would put it in our newsletter. We have not because of this discussion. We, we do have one person that asked to volunteer.
We do? Okay. You had five in August. You had all five.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
And just to mention also, I have never felt threatened at a code meeting, nor have I ever left a code meeting concerned for my safety or well-being. That's, that had to have been an isolated incident and perhaps it
And talking with everybody, it appears to be an isolated incident.
Right.
Remove the table this is discussion.
I like, you know, well, if you do a motion to table, that's basically it. I'd just like to take a look before you do that is to see what are the opportunities for a, and a hybrid application to it. Because I don't want, I like to make sure that we check all the boxes before decisions made. And I know that if you go forward with this, it's going to be on the agenda for the next two months or so before a final decision is made. But I'm in no hurry to, to pass a, a motion at this time to move forward.
So Ashok, coming up, if you have a question.
Yeah, Mr. Sanchez, it's in the, in the queue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't see you, Jerry. Come on up, Ashok. You'll be next, Jerry.
Good evening. Ashok Kurkarni, eighty-one thirty-one West Lake Drive. See, I've been architect and city planners and work in various cities. But something what, now I'm retired for quite some time, so I don't know the latest thing. But my question is that, have we checked similar towns where there is something like this is there? That's number one. And if the code enforcement board, board is working all right, the way I heard, do we really need this thing? You know, I personally feel this is going to get more complicated. I really sincerely feel, I mean, what is the reason to have this in the first place? Because last several years, we never, ever had it. Unless something really happened, then you had to think about it. If there is nothing happened like that, then why we need it? That question came to my mind. And something what you explained, I really personally feel that we have our code enforcement board is to decide that thing. Why we want somebody about that? Because I have noticed one time even council deal with that problem too, correct?
I don't recall which situation you're talking about.
I think one time this one case came here and I read the same
That was probably a lien and they were looking for a reduction in a lien. There's been several.
Right, right. But my fundamental question is that, have we really found this is a very common thing in each and every town? It may be worth looking into that.
Well, we're only one of four who's not using it right now. So
Something if we have it, maybe other towns may have it, may not have it, you know?
Right.
Yeah.
Sure.
Our town is so small and that's why I personally find very questioning.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry, come on up.
Eighty-three sixty, West Lake Drive, Lake Clark Shores. And I'm the vice chair of the code enforcement board. And it's been an honor serving under, under Paul and definitely with Debbie. I think what's beautiful about our board is the variety of backgrounds that we have, occupations and everything else. And that we bring a uniqueness and empathy to our community and the people that do come before us. So and I want to thank Ms. Dana Fisher for everything she's put in these fourteen years of doing dual role and what she had to put up with. Or it was an honor. She got to know everybody. Sixteen, sorry. I cut you off a couple of years. You know, and Sal's laughing because he knows what you had to deal with, but that's all right. And, but both of you, thank you for
Thank you.
But if it wasn't for this, I would not have known any of you or God know you. My six years of living here in Lake Clark Shores has been absolute joy. It's been an honor. And it's also brought me a different perspective sitting where you're at and, and being up there. So my vision now is, is a lot different. I, I think the only thing that I feel that might be different, and you're going to be doing this anyways, we could be doing it now, is just give us a case history. I don't know, Emily, do we have record of everything that's been decided before where we can kind of build up a database and how things different, you know, similar cases have been handled for us to go by. I think it should be like Major League Baseball or the referees in, in National Football League. What happens after a game, right? They got to go back and they grade themselves. They look at it, see if I made any missed calls. I did this.
They don't grade themselves.
No.
They have people grading them.
Right. And here's, but I think if we had a database, which you're proposing a special magistrate, you're going to be creating that database anyways. So we now have a code enforcement board full time. I think that's been a great addition to the town. And thus why the caseload has gone up. We had all these folks here about the enclave and they're living in, in, in a separate thing. I think Palm Beach County is too big. And I think a lot of things go unnoticed or because they're just too big. Lake Clark Shore and why is the gem? Because we have a lot of people here who actually do care. And we have a, a process in place that try to keep it that way. Now bringing the code enforcement board, hiring Eric, he is now brought on, I believe his name is Manny, in the building inspector. Now he's part of our quasi judicial. So we are improving and trying to better our knowledge. The only thing I feel that we could definitely use assistance with, and you're going to do it again for the special magistrate, is a base. Base of what, what we've done in the past, similar cases, what have we, and that's something that if, if it's possible, that the town provide to the code enforcement board.
You're looking for precedence.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I, I think that's what you guys are all pretty much, and consistency.
And when I was on code board, we tried to do that, but the problem, Jerry, you're not a lawyer, but so I'm not criticizing you, but the problem is like when we go look up cases, we have to also read the facts. So it's like, as lawyers, we can't go and find fifteen cases that were decided this way. And then that's that because every case has a unique factual history to it. So it's very hard to say, when was the last time someone reduced the fine ninety percent? I use your example because you voted for it. When was the last time that happened? Well, that really doesn't help because I think you need to know why. Why did they do that ninety percent reduction? What was it? Was it a real, that sob story? What happened? So when I was on code board, I remember we just pulled our hair because we, I would actually go and try to look at old ones. But then I just get the sheet and I'm like, I don't know what they talked about. I don't know how this happened. I'm just saying that that's kind of the problem with the base and the database and trying to understand it. Because like when we're lawyers and we want to go figure out, well, how, how, how did the situation pan out with the law? We just, we can't, it doesn't help us unless we know the facts.
Right. And, and, and going over that, yeah. I think one thing you're noticing is I, I, I think since Paul and I think in the last couple of years or whatever, we've done a lot. You guys used to see a lot of tarps in our community with the roof. I think a lot of that got taken care of. I think you saw a lot of stuff with the garbage. And then being put on the roadway instead of, it should be in, in one, within one's property and, and everything else. There's been a lot of gradually, I think, improvement. And actually, I think a lot of you on this council kind of wanted that. You were looking for that in the code enforcement board. And you're talking about that empathy. I, I think that's what we're bringing here. I think that's what brings the uniqueness. If you're seeing the fines, and I'm sure you're seeing some fines now that are much more heavier. And it's, again, Debbie had brought it up. They're usually because they're not communicating with the code enforcement board. They're not appearing in front of us. You have things that are very safety issues, big time. And, and we're taking it to be serious, you know, for that person that's violating to take it more serious that we're not playing around. And I think you'll see, you know, and what you're, what the code board is doing is basically just saying, hey, guys, this is Lake Clark Shore, but don't take advantage of the situation. I think we've had folks, the repeat offenders, and there are folks that are coming here that are trying, I hate to say, try to pull a, a fast one. And it's even within their occupation. This is what's even more interesting. You have people that actually are in that, in that field. They're licensed. And then they're not even doing what they're supposed to and how they got licensed or pulling permits or there's different things all of a sudden that bring up a lot of other questions in, in to bring. That's what's great about having the code, the Manny of the building inspector there, the code enforcement officer there. It's a different, I think, code enforcement board. I, I think we're moving to get to where you want this court to get to. And I think a lot of these citizens that were, that left or turned, honestly, they sat there once, a couple of them. And they, you know, not everybody can do that, but not everybody volunteers either. Look at this beautiful world we're in. How many people actually volunteer to help others? It really, you guys are what? The five percent of the population, honestly? Or, you know, public servants, all that. So we're kind of a certain group of people here. You know, so that's, I would just like to keep our gem. And like I was saying, it's not so bad to be compared to Palm Beach. I like to keep it that way.
Sure. Thank you, Jerry. Thank you. Well, we have a motion on the table or we have a motion to table. So further, do we have a second? Is there a second by anybody? Okay, Bill, for lack of a second. So then do we have a motion to, excuse me?
It's, it's just a concession, consensus.
My understanding is you'd like us to look at and explore the possibilities of a hybrid code board slash magistrate.
See what our options are and then come on back.
Let us do that and bring it back to you.
A motion?
No.
No? Okay. Then we're good there. So let's move on. Yes, sir.
Just one little thing to clear the, something that was said. And Jerry, I'm sorry if I misunderstood. I would not recommend giving the special magistrate the, the details that would pre prejudice his decisions or her decisions. I would not do that. I would not recommend doing that.
You mean details of other cases?
Right. I would not be saying, I've never seen that.
Yeah.
Right? You, you, you don't want, I don't think that's a good practice.
Come on up. Let's go. What do you need, sir?
Before you move to a different subject, I'd, I'd like you, encourage you to find us a couple more members.
I'd like to make the motion.
We got you, Mike. We got you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Like I said, it's got to be hard to find people.
There's two vacancies, Paul? Okay. I know that the, the charter or code makes some suggestions with regard to the occupation. And I think trying to check those boxes off to put in the, on the code board at times have been big, has been problematic. So
But then you get a gem ever so often over there. It's got all qualifications. So, you know, I think that's good that you have that, that nice mix.
Those qualifications are just a guideline, correct? A suggestion?
I believe, I believe so.
I think we have a wonderful new volunteer in the audience, Mr. Mike Bredewig. I think I saw him raise his hand twice. So thank you very much, Mr. Bredewig. We really appreciate it.
What you doing now?
Okay, I'm getting ready to move on. I was just letting everybody talk. If you don't talk to us, we don't know what you're thinking. I heard somebody say that somewhere.
An old Lebanese.
Yeah. All right, we're going to move on to the status report, Charlie.
My report's included in your agenda packet. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we, do we have any questions for Mr. Scheck regarding his report? Nope. Okay. Which one of you kind of people over there are going to handle the police report?
I'm just going to tell you that the status report's in your packet. And if you have any questions over here.
Is there any questions for the fine young lady Dana over there, the lieutenant?
You're too nice.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Regarding the police department, I would just like to comment that we've opened a new raceway on the edge of town. Florida Mango.
Yeah.
And I've had the opportunity to speak to one of the officers yesterday or the day before and tell him how much I appreciated him sitting there at the corner of Gregory with his radar gun. Because it's, it was a raceway before.
Yeah.
It's going to be worse now.
Yeah, now it's got a suicide lane.
Are you talking about Interstate Florida Mango?
Do we have any questions for Dana? No, no questions. Okay. Mr. Lobello.
I'll be real quick. The, the next meetings are November fourteenth and December twelfth. We have a Monster Mash Truck Event on twenty-seventh of this month. The tennis tournament is on the twelfth of November. December second, we have two events, the parade and the tree lighting on November, on December seventh, we have the Hanukkah menorah, menorah lighting. And the, the Pine Tree Bridge, it's out to bid. Next Thursday is, is the bid opening. We only need one good bid.
Is there any way we can start that after the holidays? I know it's at December or January, but could we make it a point to start it like right after the holidays? That'd be awesome.
Yeah, it, it won't, it won't probably happen before the holidays.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. Pickleball's going well. Got any questions about that? Let me know. We're going to actually re-code the tennis court next month or late this month. Thanks, Val, for your help there. The one I wanted to talk to you about is DOT. I've been having some discussions because I've heard from residents that they have a problem with Pine Tree Lane and Forest Hill Boulevard. The backup in the morning, they say is just crazy because of I ninety-five and Far, and the Forest Hill High School. So what normally I request is if you ever saw it in other jurisdictions, this thing called do not block the box, where you actually paint the intersection in paint and you say, do not block the box. So the state said they, they might do that for us, but first thing they do is they put signage. So they're going to put signage in that location saying, do not block the box. And I'm going to keep communicating with them. If that alleviates or mitigates the issue, then we'll see. But just, just so you understand, if you, if you're trying to go north on Pine Tree and make a left going west, you can't go there because everyone's blocking the intersection.
Can't go either. Traffic enforcement on site.
And traffic enforcement.
Block the box all you want. You need to have traffic enforcement on site.
They, they go hand in hand.
Hard to do every day. But it does work. I will tell you that when there is an officer there, they comply. If they're not there, there's no compliance. It's every man for themselves.
Both, both.
And I go that way every single day. So
Both, both are needed. Yes.
It calms down. Just at around eight-thirty, quarter to nine, it does calm down. I just started showing up for work late.
I haven't seen.
I could, can I do that? But last thing is, want to send out my congratulations to Sergeant Howell. He's been here for twenty years, I believe. And, and he's having a retirement party for him. He's retiring November first. So thank you, thank you, thank you for your dedicated service. So appreciate that.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Lobello? Nope. Okay.
Let's talk about the pickleball court and what we're going to do and celebrate and the grand opening. Mentioned it to Mr. Lobello. Want him to follow up and give some suggestions and get some ideas and input from council as we move forward. But I want you to know that I mentioned that to him. And he promised me that he would report back to us.
We can do that. The next, you can always do that after the November meeting, have the grand opening for that?
Yeah, we can even have it next year. But yes, I plan some kind of ribbon cutting and inviting the
We had a discussion about that as well. So that's good. We'll explore that.
Definitely.
Okay. So let's move on to council comments. Vice Mayor? We've had a lot to say tonight.
I'm done.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I'm tired. I'm done too.
Mr. Gonzalez? I know you guys are.
Just had a couple of points. I have no, no comments. I'm commented out.
We kid because we love.
Yeah, I love you guys too. Sergeant Howell, thank you for twenty great years.
Mr. Maples?
I do have two quick comments. I promise they'll be quick. First, just a reminder, the senior club is next week, Wednesday, third Wednesday of the month. So the first one is the eighteenth. So be there. We're going to be doing some cool stuff. We're going to figure that out. Also, two things with the board, maybe advocating Joe if we can for those specific positions, attorney. And thank you for volunteering for sure. That's going to be great. But just maybe if we had that to kind of shore up some of that risk maybe to the town with attorneys come in and the whole deal, that would be great. And then maybe just a thought, if we could maybe think about the fines that are getting waived, instead of being ten percent, maybe there's a standard where we do only twenty-five percent or fifty percent. Now, I don't know if that's, and I know we don't want to set a precedent for each case and it's case by case, but maybe we have a set standard where we say, well, we don't typically do less than ten percent or whatever the number, just try to recruit some of the cost that it's costing the town when we actually waive those fees in the future. Those are my final thoughts. Guys, thank you for coming tonight. I know we went. Those are my final thoughts, guys, thank you for coming tonight, I know we went, we went hard tonight, a little bit long, so want to thank you guys for sticking in there, I saw some of this and some of that, you know, everyone's tired and hungry and ready to go home, but thank you guys for being here tonight, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have one question and I should have asked this before, when will the judging for the Halloween?
The twenty-third.
Decorations be?
I think it's the twenty-third.
Okay, everybody's been noticed. Have a good evening, everyone, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Safe travels.
Thanks, Paul.